Motion be accepted as written. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chair report, there is none. Excuse me, code officers, code enforcement officers report?
I have a couple of things to bring you up to date on. Mike Haas has submitted his stage one application for his mobile home park on Central Street. And I conducted a site visit with Mr. Haas and an engineer last week. That went well. He's proposing forty-nine watt mobile home park with onsite wastewater treatment or onsite public water. He is hoping to have his stage two and stage three application ready to come before this board at your next meeting in September. The regulatory review committee met July twenty-sixth to consider a couple of things. One was the use of recreational vehicles as year-round weapons. So they asked me to come back with some language that might make it work in our downtown code. It will eventually come to this board too because it's a change to the land disorder that you have to review. So that's being discussed right now. And they did, it's a proposed amendment to chapter twelve traffic and safety deal with mainly it was drafted to deal with parking in this parking lot to allow overnight parking and visiting areas. The owner of the old Chamber building needs some parking spaces, so the town agreed to let them have two spaces on this parking lot. The problem is right now there's no overnight parking allowed in the parking lot, so the proposed amendment, chapter twelve, deals with that. At the same time, we also dealt with discrepancy in the prohibition of scooters on the walkway. They were described on the signage on here, among other things are prohibited, but the ordinance didn't say that. So we added the word scooter in there. That raised questions about, are we prohibiting motorized scooters that people use for disability purposes? So because that question was raised, it's gone back to the regulatory review committee for discussion this Thursday to clarify that, no, we're not prohibiting those sorts of licenses and equipment that people need to use if they're, if they have mobility limitations. And the regulatory review committee, by the way, also took a look at the request from a Screw Street resident to allow meeting facilities. She came to this board at your last meeting to ask for your feedback. And you in turn asked me to come to this meeting with some language to oppose that. I struggled to find some language and had the opportunity to go to the regulatory review committee and get their assistance. But it turns out they were not in favor of making the change, the ordinance doesn't allow meeting facilities in the buildings. I'm not sure this lady is here tonight, I don't see her. If she does happen to arrive here, I have a video of the committee meeting to show you all, so you can see what the discussion was.
Oh, good.
What concerns were. Whether she's here or not, you're welcome to review that, maybe at the end of the meeting. And the town council is going to be conducting their second readings of the proposed changes of chapter five and thirteen this Thursday. And there was a plan to have a public hearing held on Thursday, but unfortunately the notice didn't get in paper. So they'll do their second reading and conduct a public hearing at their next meeting and act on the ordinance change. That's all I have.
Limited public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. At this time, I'll open the limited public forum. If anyone wishes to speak, please come up and identify yourself.
Elaine Pelletier. I'm with Better Homes and Gardens, the Masseyelo Group, and I'm representing United Methodist Church. The church is in the process of trying to obtain the fitness center. And the fitness center, because it's in, well, what we, industrial zoning, but it has a non-conforming use right now with the fitness center being in there. A house of worship is not allowed in that district unless it goes through the planning board. We need to come to you for approval. So what they're looking at purchasing is the fitness center, the credit union that's behind it, and the triangle. That's all in negotiations right now, the triangle that's across that kind of grassy area. We call it the triangle. So it's actually a lot eighty-seven, eighty-eight, and eighty-nine.
Is that the piece only in between Bagley Ave. and the end of Franklin Street?
Correct. And the C board, it's between there, that green grassy area. Yeah, a lot of more parking. So we're coming to the board to see if there's any favor of doing a non-conforming change of use. Because right now it is, it is non-conforming. That law is, the triangle is in your downtown district zone.
So what we are looking at is here. This is the fitness center. This is the old credit union building here. This is the triangle, the grassy area that we were speaking about. This is the former built parking lot, and this is the former little side of the gap.
So as I was saying, the green grassy area is the zone there is downtown district. So, and then the zone where the fitness center is, is industrial. It's in the industrial zone. But right now there's a, you've already got it permitted to have a non-conforming use, which is the fitness center.
When I first met with Elaine to talk about what needed to be done to allow this prohibited use in an area that's not zoned for it, I thought at first it would take a zone change or a contract zone process. But as I was preparing some documentation for this meeting tonight, I realized that the fitness center in our ordinance is called indoor recreational facility. And that's a prohibited use of the ID district is probably here. We call it the ID district. It changes to downtown on the other side of Franklin Street, so this is ID. So what that means is a legally existing non-conforming use. And our land disorder allows, with your approval, a change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. As I pointed out, churches are also non-conforming use of the ID district. So I think the church is prepared to go through the application. The church is going to be submitting an application for your review to grant permission to change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use after by forty minutes.
You had mentioned that what you call the triangle, you plan on making parking?
At a later time. I think we have enough parking. So this spot right here would also be parking. This grassy area could also be some parking for us. And we're obtaining the side. So the left-hand side of this will also be parking right here. Or at least it's over, because this property is, is the lotions. Or at least they're coming across to get our parking here. So we have parking here, parking here. This section here that has always been used by the mill is, I just found out that it is public parking. So we'd have more spots there to use on occasion. We're also trying to obtain this spot if there's ever need for additional parking. But that would probably be done ago, not even, maybe do right away. So we have parking, so we have plenty of parking here. I think there's more than forty feet there, so we can do parking on one side and then on the other side. Right here, all along the side. There is a couple handicap parking spots already identified, I believe, on Main Street where they had a lot of the new thing. Any thoughts? I'm looking for suggestions, thoughts.
What are your plans for the old credit union building? Or, I'm sorry, it's not credit union.
Yeah, well, that's what we're calling it, is a credit union, because I don't know what else to call it.
Well, actually...
Isn't that the forestry building?
That's a cross. That's a cross.
It looks like an apartment going on right there.
Oh, that's further up the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very, very, uh, there's...
Right up above, yeah.
What you're talking about is the actual old former credit union.
Correct.
Yeah.
The old one.
Behind that.
Right.
Is that going to be grassed?
That, there's a possibility to use that for children's church or... Mission of education.
Maybe so, it's going to be used.
Yeah.
So is this instead of building new out on, out by Silver Lake?
Cost was just too astronomical to go up. Yeah. I know, it is too bad. But the facility with a little bit of work, I think, would really make it a great, they've got huge rooms. I don't know if everybody has been into the fitness center. It definitely has some good space for them to have their assembly. And I think it would be a, it's not what they wanted, but they're settling for what might be another good option. Are there any objections to? Is this the time I can ask those questions?
So how far did we take this tonight?
Well, there's no application before your review tonight, so it's just sort of get acquainted and here's what we think you're doing. And we'll be back next meeting.
Right.
Give you a formal application.
There's a apartment complex right behind there. What, who's the abutter, right here? This, this building right here?
No, that's forestry building.
Yeah, that's...
Oh, it is?
That's forestry building.
Oh, okay.
It's the forest building. It could make a nice apartment building.
Okay, I thought that that was an apartment complex. Okay.
We're not apart, we're not looking to retire that one.
Okay.
With that parking space behind it. And stuff was with forestry building.
Okay. All right, so it's not really an abutter per se?
Right now that building's doing everything correct?
Correct.
So this is just a...
But there's a huge water line that comes right down to here. It used to be a sixteen cent, a million gallons of water.
But this would certainly be a new home for yet another piece of the old mill, so for a new use.
It's good to take nothing and turn it into something.
And something, that's right. Yeah.
I'm encouraged if someone wants to get into the building and actually use it.
I thought the wire was going to...
Yeah.
I mean, I'm claiming also that there's a lot of opportunity that we can do to offer more to the community with the use of the facility on a community level. It would give us more options to do those kinds of things that we can't do perfectly in our district.
Or have a funeral without carrying a casket up the stairs.
Right, yeah.
I mean, the castle, they've done negotiations and use them as a starting point.
Yeah.
So they would come to our next meeting with...
Yes, with an application.
An application, yeah.
I would say that if you are looking to turn that piece that you call the triangle into parking, that would need to be engineered very well. That's a very difficult spot, traffic.
Right.
That could be...
It's definitely, yeah.
There's a thirty-six inch water line in the bat mall.
Right, at the base, yeah.
Used to be a B bar.
Well, they'll still use the B bar.
Well, whatever it takes, I just see, I just see that spot being a hazard for a large area of parking.
Yeah.
That's, if that's down the road, that's down the road. Good for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just looking for...
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys, everyone listening to us.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the planning board?
Does it sound too excited?
See?
Oh, okay.
They came back with two different...
I don't know how much truth there is to it. Jim Morrison, he's box builder, in case you didn't know who it was. I've heard a rumor that people on the Box Mills Road own to the center of the road. Their properties extend to the center of the road out there. Is that, is that true? Does anyone know if that's true or...
I do not know. I know my survey on Mast Hill Road goes to the center of the road, so. You have your survey?
Well, we own both sides of the road in one section, but, you know, I just wondered if that... Are you saying the town has no right of way with the road is? What? Is that... Oh, no, no, the town has sixty-six feet of right of way. Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, thirty-three feet.
Then you don't own the middle of the road.
Yeah. Technically...
You don't own the middle of the road.
Well, yeah, I just don't own the right of way.
It depends on the taking and what was identified in the town report at the time that it's taken. It may not be taken in fee, they may simply have a right of way over that possible property. And the bothering owners may very well own to the center line.
Yeah, I know I do.
So you'd have to check the records to see.
What road was that, Millvale Road?
Yeah. Box Mills.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the limited public forum. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. Administrative business, a follow-up discussion on meeting facilities in a village district.
And we had, kind of gave you a brief explanation of what happened with that proposal for meeting facilities. Even if this board wanted to recommend a change, it's probably not going to get passed the town council.
Next point moved.
Right, so that's, like I said, I had a hard time coming up with any sort of regulation or standards that made sense to allow meeting facility in residential neighborhood.
Right.
Especially on a dead-end road.
Well, at the beginning I had said, I'm all for anyone trying to start a business. I, you know, I, my hat's off you for wanting to do that. But I got looking at the abutters.
Right.
This thing. And look at, the business that this lady is going to run. And, you know, I spent too much time on that side of work to know. Things don't always, you know, ten people turn into sixty. And you think it's hard enough to control, two people have been, try to control twenty, thirty. And the lady has, I'm sure she has great intentions. But I had some serious issues with that too, after I got thinking about it, I thought, what if I lived up there? Would I want...
He does, and there are commonants to it.
If I were in a butter and was able to have some input on that, how would I feel? And I guess I look at it as, would I want one of those in my backyard? I'm zonesthem residential, and my answer would be, gee, I really don't want them. As much as I encourage your business.
And I was taking it as weddings. Not particularly the wedding reception, but...
And also with those, the issue of parking, there's guys that piece of property that is described as...
Parking would be a disaster with the ten people that down. You know that area really, really well.
Well, it's a dead-end street, that's true.
Yeah.
Unless she could acquire a back entrance.
Well, that would still be off Wendell Heights, and that would still create the same...
Same issue.
Same issue.
And the council already, this, that came from the council recently, and that would be fine.
Right.
It's a great idea, I hope she finds a good location.
Yeah, I hope she could get the business on the right.
I do too, I think it would be a good business.
I think that's the place for it to be.
Yeah.
So the next topic, this is going to the regulatory review committee on Thursday, is a request to consider allowing sawmills in rural parts of town. Right now, it's considered a manufacturing facility and is prohibited in our one, our two. And look back in our original, any sort of, by the way, I'll show you the documentation while I look at it. This is from our original land use ordinance, and I highlighted the part of the table of uses that would pertain to a sawmill, either a light industry or heavy industry, depending on the extent of noise, dust, that involves, that is generated by the use, it could be either a light industry or a heavy industry under the old ordinance. As you can see in the rural district, there's a couple where it's, that's a rural up there. It's not permitted, NP not permitted. So even back in nineteen ninety-five, things like sawmills couldn't be permitted in the rural area.
You said couldn't?
Could not, right. NP means not permitted.
This is on a commercial basis? This is on a commercial basis for a commercial sawmill?
Yes, and our current ordinance would call it either a home-based production or a manufacturing facility, again, depending on the extent of the operation. If it was classified as home-based productions, and L1 means it's a permanent, I could issue, again, this is rural. R1, R2 is the same as well. Manufacturing facility, though, is prohibited in our current ordinance. Any type of manufacturing facility. And a sawmill is a type of manufacturing facility.
So if one were to own a woodblock, in advance of the acreage, own a woodblock, they could not put a sawmill on that piece of property?
You can cut firewood, as much as you want, but when you're talking about cutting lumber, dimensional lumber, that's a sawmill, so that's prohibited.
Even these portable sawmills that you can...
That would be more of a home-based.
Like a bandsaw in it?
What about if you sell on the firewood, I mean, you're manufacturing firewood, right?
We don't regulate that, we allow it. It's called a firewood harvest, and that could, that could be done by a... The gentleman that, I'm surprised he's not here, but he might be coming to the regulatory review committee, but I suggest he come to you as well. It's on their agenda. This is Willis Road. It's an intersection with Jacob Uppon Road, you own over that is? And the gentleman who expressed concern about not being able to have a sawmill as a business in the rural district has a shed right here. It's more of a building, actually, yeah. I didn't say, hit some photos of it, but I don't have them working here. He, that was permitted as a storage building where he keep his business equipment, including a portable sawmill. He has it set up and uses it, he says, to make lumber for his own personal use and occasionally to sell, but only occasionally. So I haven't had an issue with that. The neighbor in front of it, though, has had an issue, and he actually has committed, maybe complained about the noise. So in discussing this issue with the sawmill owner, he asked, well, why can't I have a sawmill in the rural area? Because that's where your source of material is. What's wrong having a sawmill? So he's going to ask the committee that question Thursday night, and eventually you will get involved with that too, if there's an interest in changing the ordinance to allow sawmills. You have a question, Ed?
Portable sawmill is not going to generate what I call a lumber industrial by any means. It doesn't have the production capability to do many thousands, four feet of anything, really. I'd ask the gentleman, say, the past year of history of how much he put out, what's actually sold.
I think he would like to be able to conduct more business activity there without having a problem in terms of permitting, so. That's why he's, he's coming to the town to ask the town to consider allowing sawmills as a commercial use.
That's on the backside of Jacob Uppon. Does he own a lot of that mountain or a lot of property or acreage there to harvest a lot of the lumber?
No, it's not a real big lot, maybe five acres.
Oh, really?
Does the neighbor complain about the occasional selling of the extra? Or has it increased beyond what you first considered?
Well, like I said, the building was permitted as a storage building. There was no commercial activity that was permitted there.
How long did he own the saw? Portable sawmill?
How long did he own it? I don't know.
But you've known that it's been there for a number of years?
I've known that he stores equipment there, but I have not been aware of any use of that equipment there, particularly the sawmill.
So it hasn't been in operation terribly long?
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
Which my next question would be, if there's a butter, you know, have they lived next to each other for two months? Or has it been ten years? And has this sawmill been operational for years and especially now becoming useful?
Looking at the bigger picture, though, the question is, should sawmill be allowed anywhere in the rural districts? And we're not just talking about this property. We're talking about a change that will allow anybody to operate a sawmill business.
Where could they be put? Get them up there.
They're allowed now in the commercial sawmills in town, which are...
Reintendable. Seems a little...
It seems a little... Not the intent.
I guess the question...
What's the physical address?
Why is it qualified as manufacturing?
You don't know.
Well, but there are some places in rural districts that would...
You cut manufacturing if you're selling? As opposed to...
Many people, it's noisy. They move to the country for the quiet.
Are you manufacturing and producing itself?
Here's where sawmills could be allowed right now in the C1, C2, C3. C1, C2 are access off Route 1. C3 is the industrial park. ID, IDO, and the Route 15 residential commercial district, which goes up River Road. Those are the only areas in town where any type of manufacturing facility is allowed.
Wouldn't this be a better subject for a contract zone rather than something for the entire rural district?
Well, that's, that's the discussion that I think the board should have, is it makes sense to allow a sawmill manufacturing facility or any type of manufacturing facility in the rural parts of the town? Should you allow any type or should you limit it just to sawmills that use the materials they get in the rural parts of town? Or not bother any, not do anything?
That could easily be a case-by-case basis.
I remember there's an old sawmill up on Williams Pond Road.
Yep. With just a couple houses from our eyes.
I mean, old, it's, it's got an old, a giant circular blade. You know, like an old-fashioned type of sawmill.
Yep.
The sawmill up on Route 15, I suppose they had the pet wood for years, apparently, the old McDonald's sawmill. I don't know, is it still...
It's a trap mill.
But like Jack said, I don't know where, it certainly, I live in a rural area, and it seems like that would be an area where working with timber and cutting firewood or, either you cut it into firewood or you cut it into boards, one is just as loud as the other, I think.
You're cutting wood, I mean, does it make a difference whether you're cutting firewood or you're cutting it into boards?
Yeah, but one's temporary, one's, the other's permanent.
Well, if you heat your house with wood, you're cutting wood.
What about bandsaws?
Not Monday through Friday.
I think a chainsaw is a lot louder than a bandsaw.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I don't know.
Well, it doesn't make sense if you own a lot of acreage out back to have to truck it into town and cut it out. That's not exactly productive either.
Kind of an operation that's pretty extensive in the rural area.
So you said he was going to come to see us at some point?
Well, I thought he'd be here tonight, but it's on the agenda for the regulatory review committee Thursday. And if that committee would like to see a change made, then we'll come back to you. You'd have to approve that change. Add a public hearing.
Any idea, Jeff, why that was ever part of the zoning? What was the, do you know any evidence for that?
The only thing I can think of is it's generational, generates dust, truck traffic.
Truck traffic.
And the rural area is not really intended for that type of activity.
Rural is farming, dairy, I mean...
I just can't believe that the industrial park is a better area to make noise in some desolate lot of back roach and this out of town. To me, it seems like it's just the opposite.
I could so see that being a case-by-case basis, though, looking at the housing development that's going on out on Bucks Mills or whatever, if you bought a two-acre lot out there to put a sawmill in right next to some of the nice houses that are going on that overlook Thurston Pond and everything, that's not exactly an ideal place.
It wouldn't if I was one of those homeowners.
Right, exactly, exactly, so it's like...
Contract zone.
Yeah.
Perfect for that.
The thing is rural areas were never intended to be residential areas. That was the whole idea of rural zones and requiring large lots. So that you still have the opportunity to live a rural life if you wanted to. That's kind of the thought behind that. Hydro garden and running tractors and you don't have to be fit if you want, I don't know, it just seems contrary to rural, to the rural zone to me, not allowing it.
I agree.
George, is the board open to the idea of considering some changes in the ordinance to allow sawmills specifically in the rural parts of town?
I think it's worth a discussion, but you guess?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, there's definitely a place for them and a place not.
And could it be identified as something other than manufacturing, you know, maybe timber products? Because manufacturing could be anything. Cutting sawwoods, cutting lumber, you know, it would be completely different than a machine shop or anything, I don't know. And you mentioned truck traffic, I think a portable bandsaw isn't going to be having ham and lumber trucks pulling up and driving away with a truckload of... You know, I would think more pickup trucks coming and going, but...
I think it's actually going on to a pretty good extent out there anyway, the private, the small sawmills.
Yeah.
Like I said, I've driven by, I know I drive by probably two or three coming to here.
So this one is, this particular, there's a mannequin for you?
This one's even, well, yeah, I mean, this one's further off the roads than I traveled in. Than the ones that are operating right now. And again, I don't know, you know, a lot of them are operating for their own use, but some of them I know are operating and making things to sell. George, I think you're the only one that doesn't know, just to give a heads up, I can't read anybody else's book, but these meetings are now being broadcast live over the cable and the internet.
Put your beard down.
I'm saying, Paul Wilder could straight show up.
You came in late, so you didn't hear that announcement, but so it's good, it's good, by the way, to keep in mind that you're talking into a microphone and that you should be relatively close to the mic so you can be heard. That's a problem we're having right now. It's hard for the mic to pick up your voice, especially people in the audience.
I think it was Cameron that wasn't supposed to speak from the audience.
That one there is.
Try to keep that in mind, not be down the topic, sorry.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any other discussion?
So you'd like to come back at the next meeting with some suggested changes?
Well, we should look at the comprehensive plan, too. Does this fit into what we're envisioning for the future? If I'm coming from some other state, do I want to move and build my McMansion at a place where they're going to, do I want to invest my money in a place where I could have a sawmill next to me?
There's a lot of things we could look at, too, as far as the minimum acreage size, right? That a person would do that type of business on, so on and so forth.
At your angle, there's a member of the public been raising his hand, I don't know if you could see that?
Yes, I just wait for him to come up to the mic.
I did, at some point, you know, we don't have a public discussion area, but, you know, Jim went up.
Thank you.
Maybe we need to add something to the agenda for the future.
Thank you, Brian. All I want to say was that I've just discovered lately that somewhere in the ordinance is it says that our roads are limited, other than the roads that are actually state or state-aid roads, we're actually limited to thirty-four thousand pound weight limit. So if you put a manufacturing out there, now you've got a, now you've got trucks that are going to be hauling to your facility and I just wanted to inject that.
Well, that's why I thought, you know, instead of manufacturing, make it, identify it a little finer. You know, portable, you know, home-based timber, I don't know, I don't know what we could call it, but it would be different than somebody hauling lumber in and out or a logging truck showing up to and dropping trees off for this person to mill into lumber and...
There is a thirty-four thousand pound, but it doesn't apply to every town road or something. Exactly to that, so we can get that to the region where it might be a good place to have a place that uses heavy truck traffic.
And a lot of those are for, there's a lot of exemptions for residential use specifically. So if someone's having work done on their house, then the weight limit might not apply based on the type of work they're having done.
Yeah, that's right.
So in the event that someone did have a business, though, that would change things.
So the last subject I'd like to bring up for discussion is, as I mentioned earlier, the regulatory review committee is considering changing our ordinance to allow recreational vehicles to be used as dwellings for year-round. Right now, you can occupy seasonally, but not as a year-round dwelling. I'd like to ask for some feedback from this board, what your thoughts might be, whether or not that's something that we want to make happen. This came to the committee, from me, actually, I came to them, I was preparing to initiate some enforcement actions on two campers that are being lifted right now up along Pond Road in the headway for some time. And I came to the committee and shared that with them and asked them for their thoughts about what they thought, what they thought about what these people are doing, is happening more and more frequently now, not just in this town, but elsewhere as well. And they came back and said, "Well, essentially, what's the problem with that? Why can't we allow people to live in campers year-round?" So that's the question that I'm posing to this board, you know, what do you think?
Well, they have a limited amount of insulation and when it gets really cold, people warm them up by putting bigger stoves and bigger heating sources in them. That's how they try to stay warm in the winter and I can think of at least two.
Anyone that I know that owns it...
Two refrigerators that we've been to.
Is not headed north to Buck's Ford. It just, it makes no sense to me.
So are these people living permanently, or is it while they build a house, or...
They've been out there for a while.
There is one, one person or family that I know of that has been staying in an RV while they're building their home and that, I'm expecting to be completed by the end of the summer. So that will go away, that camper living situation will go away. There are two people up along Pond Road, I believe, one of them, anyway, intends to make it their permanent home. The other one, I'm told, is temporary, that they do have building plans, but I haven't received any application permits yet on that. They've been in that camper for close to a year. That camper I just mentioned was draining their wastewater on the ground. They had a hose hooked up to the drain that was going in the woods.
We've seen a couple burn down in the wintertime, haven't we, Jack? Last, in the last recent years.
Any heat source.
Right.
Because we all know whose things are insulated when it's hot.
Right. Putting woodstoves in that cause the system to burn down.
Boy, I just have a real... Whatever your heat source would be, you know, it just seems to me to be a disaster.
It's not their intention, I guess, if they're not insulated, they're not intended for year-round.
What if someone shows up with a brand-new?
We're thinking Winnebago?
Yeah, like a stream, you know, airstream or something, you know, something that's really... But I would say it would have to have a permanent source of water or a solution other than dumping the waste on the ground.
Would they have to have a septic system?
I would think, you know, what do you do unless you're going to drive it into town every so often to have someone come pump it out?
If it meets the criteria of a single-family dwelling, would it or how would it? What would it take to make that happen?
That's a good question, not an easy answer. The state's shoreline guidelines address recreational vehicles as well and the state guidelines say you can't, if you live in a camper for more than one hundred and twenty days a year, you have to provide a septic water disposal versus a holding tank. A lot of campers have holding tanks, you fill up and then have empty, they're a camping camper, so there's nothing station will take care of it that way. But if you're in a shoreline zone, you have a camper and intend to live it for longer than one hundred and twenty days, you have to have a lot of safety precautions and stuff like that.
So I think if we mimicked some of this, that, those standards...
Well, we do now. That, the only difference between shoreline and non-shoreland is if you're outside shoreline zone, you can live in a camper for seven months out of the year and that's considered seasonal.
Are there other communities around that do allow people to live year-round in campers?
I sent out a question on my code officer listserv that I can walk to and ask the question in any town with a name that allow RVs to be living year-round. I got two responses. One said they just recently changed the ordinance to add in the one hundred and twenty day restriction, obviously they've had it before. And the other response I got was a phone call from a code officer out of Bostfield. He explained that in that town, they're convenient. He considers that if you're camping, you're a camper, you're not calling it your home, it doesn't matter how long you stay, you can be camping year-round and that's okay in that town. And he said, he said, "If you put up a mailbox or your camper..."
So if you have a post office box in town, you could camp all year round.
That's the way I understood it, out of Bostfield, yeah.
Surely use composting toilets or outhouses or that type of stuff? I mean, it's just a rural area, you've got enough land, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, that was done for centuries.
Yeah, outhouses allowed anymore?
Sure, yeah, it's, yeah, you can have a composting toilet or a pit for a meter of water for a meter. If you're, if you're, the way ordinance works now, if you're living year-round in a structure, you need to bring pressurized water to that structure. As soon as you've done that now, you have to have a eventual wastewater disposal system tank to deal with.
Right.
The more primitive systems include the outhouses and a small groundwater disposal field, it's called a primitive system, but their only design is a very limited disposal, twenty gallons of wastewater per day. And you can only have hand-carrier, hand-pump water to deal with. It's really meant for a very, very primitive lifestyle for a camp you use once in a while.
But there are people that are trying to do that.
And I permitted some primitive systems to, for camps. But as soon as you, as soon as you bring pressurized water to that camp, that, that primitive system can't be used anymore, you have to replace it with something bigger.
Some of these campers could be better built and better insulated than some of these primitive camps that people may want to live in year-round.
That's true. I think that goes back to what we, the single-family dwelling criteria, if you're going to live in it year-round, what does it have to meet in order for them to be able to live in it year-round? As long as it's safe.
Fire codes? Fire codes?
Yeah.
Because like you were saying earlier, it has to have a heating source, they're barely insulated. So what are they going to put a, we have a neighbor who has a wood stove in his.
Right.
And tries to do it all year-round.
I have seen some pretty sad situations, I have, there's one camper that was lived in by a single lady who hadn't known a place to stay. She was a bit of a hoarder, so the camper was a very small camper, she filled the combustible carriels and she was using a kerosene lamp and a candle for heat and light. She's really lucky she didn't ruin up the main camper.
Right. So by allowing that year-round, do we open the door for those types of opportunities to...
And she had no running water, no bathrooms, she was using the woods for a bathroom. This isn't the only time I've seen that, it does happen. The other thing, too, we just recently amended our lane disorderness to allow tiny houses. And there's a stipulation in there that the mall proved, the council proved that if a tiny house is on wheels, it can't be lived in year-round.
Right. And also it has to meet the criteria of a single-family dwelling.
Yeah. So I wonder, what's the difference between a tiny house on wheels and a camper on wheels?
Construction.
It would be the ultimate construction, but the end result.
And that's the other decision they made in Bostfield, as long as your camper stays, if you keep the wheels on, you're okay. As soon as you take the wheels off and block it up, now you're a different structure now.
Keep the tires on so you can be camping.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's all I heard, I know the town manager put out a similar inquiry to her town manager listserv, but I don't know if there were a couple in the back at the council meeting that had responded, but those town managers that responded, nothing I think, didn't say that they allow RVs to live in their towns.
So it's our regulatory review committee that questions why we're not allowing this? Is that what you said? It seems, I find it, I think that sounds like an odd question if there's no one else in the state that, you know, the one person, the one town that replied, you know, as long as you don't do this, as long as you don't do that, it sounds like they're just avoiding dealing with the issue. But that lady, you know, she's got no place else to go. So if you can't stay, where are they going to go? That's all they have. So I don't know.
Those are handled on a case-by-case basis, when we come across those, to try to find them more suitable living conditions.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
We had a gentleman once, back in two thousand and ten, that was building a school left on the town by our, by the...
Yes, yes.
We had to go to court to deal with that one, because we left and the school left. It was, it was the back end of the school left, the private pole was gone and he had wallowed it in. It stuck a pipe out towards West Oak and he was using a five-gallon bucket towards part of it. Now this is a situation.
But you go back to the lobby primitive limit. I guess, excuse me, if someone makes that conscious choice and they're not going to damage themselves or harm themselves or anyone with them or neighbors or...
Do you allot, need to be with a certain acreage?
Well, those are some of the discussions the committee has, if you want to have a lost size and there were comments being along that line, too, because the committee members, you know, they let the people then take care of themselves, have a proper, you know, worry so much about how safe they are, whatever they're living in. how safe they are, whatever they're living in.
I mean, if you're, if you're living on a 40 acre lot and you're using the woods up the back door for your privacy, I mean, not that, how close is your, you're close as a mother. But if you've got a third of an acre and you're doing that same thing.
That's a little different.
Might, might your mothers be very happy with that?
And I think the state might take a step for that, because we do, we're required by law to enforce the state sub-service wastewater control rules in the plumbing code. We're required by law to enforce that. And, you know, it's one thing if you're on the Appalachian Trail and you gotta go, you find in there a tree, a bush, you do your duty. But day after day, from a home, despite something that's okay, to go out in the woods, I think it's pretty much shit.
Again, it's a, it's a hard call to make, but you know, it's.
Well, like Steve said, if you just have guidelines, if, if that's what you want, that's a single-family dwelling or a big thing with eight people can live in, you have to provide.
Septic.
The septic and the water and the, you know, this, we could make a list of.
Adequate heat sources.
It doesn't matter what the house is, it's, yeah, it, this is what you need in order to, to have a dwelling, whether it has wheels on it or not, you know.
The tough thing though about these campers that are being lived in, these campers are expensive vehicles. They're rundown, small, because that's all the person living in can afford. And so if you ask, expect them also to provide a proper septic system for their camper, they can afford it.
Well, how long does a pickup camp?
Why would that make a difference?
I mean, obviously you have a lot less, I mean, does this camper need to be X amount of square feet or can it be?
Like a tiny house.
So, yeah.
Well, you know, there's no, there's no minimum size for a camp, right?
Don't, don't we have limits on trailers, you know, what, housing trails, don't they have to be a certain, I don't know what the correct language is, but like a, still certain storm grade, don't they have to be capable of withstanding? You know, if I wanted to put a mobile home trailer, you know, it has to be, it has to meet a certain guideline.
You gotta call it a wind zone rating.
Or a rain.
A wind zone rating, and there's three classifications. We are a wind zone two. I mean, in fact, in our camp, in our county, it's a wind zone two. So, and that, that's a rating that the structure is designed to withstand 100 mile per hour.
So we have guidelines for that already in this building. If I want to build my own house, you know, I'm going to have to follow certain codes and requirements. If you want, and, and, yeah, that's all they can afford, but there has to be some, some limitation, there's some guidelines you have to go by.
Those campers are probably tied down to withstand a 100 mile per hour wind or whatever.
But if they add a heating source, what about the fire code? Would they meet fire code?
Well, recreational vehicles are built to a standard that's completely different than the standard applied to conventional ones.
Right.
Even, even mobile homes, larger, there's different codes for built to.
But even, most campers have a propane heat source in them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then someone goes along and puts a wood stove in later.
Like my neighbor on, you know, in Doc Pond Road.
I think you'll find that the heating systems that these RVs complement are, are not intended to be used, they tend to be, might need to generate the heat in the summer or winter.
I think they're right on that.
But they just need a supplemental form of heat coming in, wood stove or.
Issues we've seen have been.
And that's where you face the danger.
Right.
Yeah.
So the current status is that they got permitted anywhere, but they are existing and are kind of not really addressing it?
Well, I am. I am talking to these people and trying to convince them to bring things up to court. The gentleman who attended the committee meeting described his conditions and he actually put in a septic system that he designed himself. And that's, there was no provision of state law to allow that, you'd have a properly designed and properly permitted inspected system. But he felt quite comfortable that the system he put in is working well. And he feels quite comfortable in his RV. He's lived in it through the winter and currently hasn't had no problems. And probably his biggest problem is access. He's on, he's way out on Upper Long Pond Road, unfortunately that's not well maintained, so particularly difficult, especially in springtime, given the terms of life to get through there. So, so the discussion is continuing.
Does he like water?
I would assume he does. He doesn't have any running water, but well.
No well?
No well.
Make sure it doesn't do.
He doesn't have a lot of water usage.
I guess my question before about, not necessarily addressing is, where do we incur the most liability? Not, kind of, nudge lightly or however not addressing those that are out there? Or do we incur more liability if we approve them?
Right.
As an accepted use? If something happens. If we approve it without a list of criteria that they have to make, then I think you're on the right track on the liability and that would be an issue. You're, you're always going to have someone that wants to live independently and primitively and just goodbye. And I, I'm not so sure we need to discourage that as long as they're accepting the responsibility for what they do.
Right.
It doesn't become ours. And I think if we go the route of approving or allowing that, then I think the responsibility then gets flipped to us. I don't know. I would disagree with what you just said.
And any, somebody that lives in a stick-built house could do something foolish and, and destroy their house. It's just because it's something that's been allowed by the planning board, it doesn't, I don't think we did anything wrong to destroy that house. And the people that want to live that way could probably, would probably be willing to jump through the hoops. But what about those that are stuck living that way?
That, that can.
I don't know, I could see reasons to let it happen and then reasons to not.
I just see massive safety issues in the wintertime, you know.
Right now, septic design is based on number of bedrooms, basically, and not particularly on the number of people or, you know. And water usage, whether it's small well or public, there's so many gallons that basically. But in some of those modes of living, water usage can be very low and size of a holding tank or, or a leach field would be quite limited. And if the number of occupants changed, then so do the water and septic requirements too.
So if it was allowed, the criteria that we would want to be made by allowing it would probably be more of a financial burden that would defeat the purpose of what they were trying to do to begin with, unfortunately.
Every, every town that I've checked on, they talk about RVs living in them, they all immediately talk about septic disposal, you have to properly dispose of your wastewater in any type of structure you live in. And that could mean collecting it and transporting it to a dumping station. The other camper on the Upper Long Pond Road that was draining directly in the woods, when I asked him to stop doing that, his solution was to collect it and detain there and transport it to his father's house and hold it and dump it in his system. And I said, that's fine, as long as you stop dumping it on the ground.
Yeah, I guess as something says, you can't, you can't take your waste to a different town.
Right.
As long as you do illegally.
That's what you're doing if you're camping, sell up your holding tank.
Yeah.
Drive to a dumping station. So that was an acceptable solution for me. Holding tanks was discussed in the committee. Right now, our ordinance is not allowing holding tanks to be used for first time system. You actually have to adopt a holding tank ordinance in order for that to be allowable. You can use a holding tank for a replacement system if you don't have room for a full-size system, then have a holding tank, best permitted, but not for first time. So I'm not sure if the council's going to want to consider adopting a holding tank ordinance, so we can start allowing holding tanks for first time system. And I don't know if that would be a viable solution for these people who are financially blind and end up in a small rundown camper and having to spend several thousand dollars for holding tank. There's, there's no easy solution when you talk about requiring proper septic wastewater or wherever you live, you have to have that.
But the alternative is composting toilet. That gets rid of the use of a septic field because gray water can be a different type of system.
It's a, that's a primitive system, that's what I talked about earlier. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a composting toilet and a gray water disposal.
Would be fine.
But instead of living with no water source other than carrying it in a gallon of water, then you're not going to create a whole lot of.
One thing you're not going to.
Sweat it out.
I mean, that's. Yeah. And I suspect that's what most of these are. I don't, I assume they don't have a, a water supply or well or anything like that if they have, they're carrying bottled water.
It would probably be helpful if we, if you brought pictures of the place, because I think you had them before. I, I've seen it, because I go hiking out there. It's the place right next to the road, I mean, impinging on the road.
One is close to the road from the other, I think. The first one you come to is on the right, it's just, it's just before the town's sledge storage facility.
Yeah, yeah.
And the next one is way past that.
Yeah.
It's on the left, same boat.
Yeah, I have, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're not attractive. You wouldn't want one in your neighborhood.
Right next to a sledge, composting toilet.
I know.
So what committee is, what they would like to consider is allowing living in RVs in the rural parts of town, if that's your focus, keep it rural.
Doesn't make it safer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly.
That doesn't really accomplish my.
It's not a magic bullet.
No.
You're welcome to attend the meeting Thursday night, if you want to participate in the session.
If anything, it's probably less safe because it's further away from service.
It's nice to have the time and distance to travel on a, and our road crews do a great job to, to get there in a raging snowstorm at two in the morning in a rural area that's asking a lot on anybody.
Are the people that are doing that, they have claimed the property, they own the property they're on?
Yes.
They did.
So they're paying taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw that coming.
Well, you can look that up too.
Yeah. Are they within setback?
I don't want to go into one site, the first one I come through, I haven't been in.
It's the one on the right, the first one, I was, I was worried, it seemed so close.
No, I, I, from, from the edge of the road, I think, I think he's, he's 25 years.
Okay.
There was a camper on Silver Lake Road that was parked behind a house and similar to the ones on Upper Long Pond Road, same style, same size, but he built a ramshackle addition on that.
You know the way he said that.
And he was using an extension cord in the house for the power supply. That's the one over there, so I'm glad about that. I tried to encourage the property owner that was putting it in a good idea to be living like that. And so I think he moved on, to the best of my knowledge. So sometimes I can, you know, get these things, can deal with these things without going through enforcement, but. And then the committee, by the way, is asking not to take any enforcement action until, until the decision is made on whether or not these should be allowed to use.
You're referring to ordinances regarding blight?
No, no, we don't address blight directly. We have a property maintenance ordinance which is being updated. And that will have some ability to assure that structures are safe to live in and properly maintained. And the side effect might be that these rundown isores might, might be addressed with that way. But the term blight is not used in our maintenance ordinance.
But economic conditions for whoever is trying to exist doesn't, isn't in there either.
Yeah, for not a charity.
And we also have to allow them to live. But it's.
I have nothing else.
Economic development? No, nothing. I thought he might have said something.
Yeah, nothing for you?
Nothing. It's a good for economic development?
Here is nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on that? No? All in favor?